This meeting is held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Beasley, are there any sunshine announcements you would like to share with us?
Yes. Notice has been provided to Bergen Record, Ellis Spolito, as well as posted with the city clerk. I'd like to request to mark this as B1 for her evidence.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that said, would you please take roll call?
Yes. Commissioner D'Angelo?
Here.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen?
Present.
Vice Chair Rule?
Here.
And Chair Coyle?
Present.
We have five commissioners, we have quorum.
Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please swear in any staff that are in attendance? Any correspondence or any adjournments?
No correspondence or adjournments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to go into an executive session, and we should be in for possibly 20, 25 minutes, maybe less, and then we'll be back out to begin the meeting. So we are going now. Thank you. Welcome back. Are we ready, Iris, to record? Okay. Mr. Beasley, please note that Commissioner Sablicki is here with us.
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, looking at the agenda, we see that case Z2025-0059 and case Z20250-0060 is 240-250 Newark Avenue. And looking at the description is the appeal, the zoning officer's determination to deny demolition on both of them, we decide we can hear both at the same time. So we have Mr. Lean? Okay. Good evening.
That's his hand? There we go. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Lean of Connel Foley here on behalf of the applicants. As the chairwoman just said, this is an A appeal for two separate properties. We appreciate that they're going to be heard together as the arguments are essentially the same. This was a notice case, as this is an A appeal. I did upload my notice packets to the portal, but I'm going to provide the originals too.
If you can give it to Iris so she can mark it as A1 separately for both of these applications.
Okay. So the matter before you tonight, as stated in the agenda, is an appeal of the denial of two demolition ordinances, excuse me, two demolition permits for 240 and 250 Newark Avenue. They are both located in the neighborhood commercial zone. You might know the property in particular because they've got a very unique shape to them. They are where Second Street and Newark meet. They are very triangular and short piece of property. They are essentially a one and two family home on one piece of property, and the other is a commercial, which is the smaller one-story building that meets at the corner of Newark and Second Street. Before I get into the specifics of what happened with the denial of these permits, I think it's really will be helpful for the board if I give some background on our demolition ordinance and what has occurred over the last couple of years. I'm not sure if the board is aware, though I know Mr. LaPaglia is well aware, that the prior demolition ordinance was vitiated by our appellate division in a case called Berardo versus the city of Jersey City. The former demolition ordinance required that everybody who was seeking a demolition permit would first make an application to the historic officer, seeking what was called a, I'm forgetting the name of it, but it was a certificate of appropriateness. No, it was not a certificate of appropriateness. It was a, anyway, it was a memorandum that basically said whether they felt that the property had historic value or it did not have historic value. And it was a checklist item, whenever you made an application to the planning board or the zoning board, that you needed to supply that memo evidencing that the building did not have any historic value and could therefore be demolished, if demolition was proposed as part of the application. That was challenged. It went to the appellate division. The appellate division essentially said that the ordinance was violative of the MLUL, and it basically said it's violative because this process is not talked about at all in the MLUL. It pointed to Section 111 of the MLUL, which describes a very, very particular process for how historic properties or properties in historic districts should be, if there's a demo permit, the zoning officer should refer them to the historic board. The historic board should review the demolition permit and then make a recommendation as to the zoning officer as to whether the demolition of the property was warranted. And that recommendation actually has to be followed by the zoning officer. Okay? That's the process that's in the MLUL. And the court, in the Berardo case, was very specific in what it said. It said, "In order to effectuate the legislative intent to create statewide uniformity, our courts have generally held that the requirements established in the MLUL are to be applied strictly." Okay? So with that, I do want to read what is actually required in Section 111 as to this process that I just mentioned. "If the zoning ordinance designates and regulates historic sites or districts pursuant to the MLUL, the governing body shall by ordinance provide for referral of applications for issuance of permits pertaining to historic sites or property in historic districts." I'm going to bang on that a lot because it's very important to the case that we're making this evening. Those permits should be referred to the Historic Preservation Committee for a written report on the application of the zoning ordinance provisions. And then the referral should go either to the zoning officer, for them to make a determination about the demolition permit, or it should continue on to the zoning board or the planning board if there is an application pending for that property. So after Berardo, we would hope that the city of Jersey City would pass an ordinance that basically just enacts the exact same language that's in the MLUL. However, that's not what they did. Earlier this year, they adopted ordinance 25006, which is a change to not only our demolition ordinance, but a change to our zoning ordinance. The new process says instead of going directly to the historic officer and the historic officer making a decision on their own, all permits are reviewed by the historic officer, and one of two things either happens. They either decide no historic value and the permit can continue on, or there is historic fabric, this should be referred to the historic commission, and then the historic commission follows the process that's in the MLUL. The problem here, of course, is, again, the MLUL does not mention a role for the historic officer in this process. It is a process that is supposed to be followed very closely. The zoning officer makes a, gets a permit if they feel that there is historic value or, excuse me, if they are a historic site or in a historic zone, then it goes directly to the historic commission. Why is that so important? It's important because the way this is written, it's meant that it's already decided that the property is a historic site or it's in a historic zone. It's not meant to be a backdoor process whereby any building in the city of Jersey City could be historic based on the whims of the historic commission. And we know that's not the process because there are established statutory provisions in the MLUL to designate a site as historic. Okay? And those processes are essentially this. And I'm going to read from Section 65 of the MLUL. "All historic sites in historic districts designated in the zoning ordinance shall be based on indentifications in the historic preservation plan of the master plan." Okay? So it's plain, if something is historic, it needs to be in our master plan. It doesn't, we don't get to spot zone things and say, "Well, we didn't put it in there. We missed that one." Actually, it should have been deemed historic. Right? The other process would be the city council is permitted to landmark properties. Okay? And we've done that twice in this city's history. We've done that with a Phase 1 and Phase 2 reviews, which established historic properties in the city of Jersey City, and those lists are available online, they're in our ordinance, you can find those. So there's supposed to be two places you go to to look, to see if there's, if your property is historic. Is it in a historic district? And is it named in the master plan? Or is it landmarked, as was decided by the city council? In the matter at hand, the properties are on none of those lists. They're not within our master plan, they're not landmarked. Right? So when our client put in for their demo, the process that is now currently on the books was followed. Some, it was followed in the sense that a memo was prepared, which was signed off on by a third-party consultant and our historic officer. It was referred to the historic commission, and the historic commission decided, "Nope, these buildings do have historic value even though that they are not listed anywhere in our ordinance, and they're not listed in the master plan, and there's no ordinance designating them as landmarks." So our challenge today rests really on three separate issues. One, as I've tried to lay out here, the ordinance adopted by the city is violative of the process that is in the MLUL. And the court was very clear in Berardo, you need to follow it to the T. Instead, what we've done is we've created an ordinance whereby the entire city of Jersey City is essentially a historic district, subject to review by the historic officer for any person who owns property and seeks to demolish the property. The effect of that is, could be devastating to somebody who owned property for years and years and years with no notice that their property is deemed historic. Example, somebody who's owned a home here for 50 years, wants to retire, sell the property to a developer, developer wants to knock it down, and they're sending the value of the property based on what it's worth once they've knocked it down. Go apply for the demo permit. Property's historic. Sorry, can't knock it down, can't make your money, you're stuck with it, got to treat it as historic property now. Where was the notice of that? Where's the due process? It was, it's basically, like I said, a spot zoning, it's a backdoor method. There is a process in our MLUL to name properties as historic, and this is not it. Now, two properties are mentioned in the reports by the historic officer as being part of the boundaries of the Italian Village Historic District and the Lower Newark Avenue Historic District. Those are not historic districts in our city. They're not on our map. We've never adopted ordinances to make them historic. What they are is eligible to be historic districts. One, based off of a historic opinion of eligibility from 2019, that would be the Village Historic District, and the other is the Lower Newark Avenue Historic District, 1990. In other words, the city has had multiple years and multiple chances to adopt those areas as historic and have not done so. The city just redid their master plan. They could have added these properties to the master plan. They failed to do so. Now, what you'll hear from the historic officer is, there is a section of the master plan that refers to multiple eligible historic districts in the city. One of them is the Lower Newark Avenue Historic District, as I stated. Again, eligible, eligible to be historic districts, but not historic districts. And the only time that these properties are mentioned as, in the historic element of the master plan, are boundaries of the Lower Newark Historic District, the eligible one. That's important because what the memos denying and saying that these properties should be considered historic say about those eligible districts is, both districts are mentioned in the historic preservation element, but no evaluation was made as to the contributing and non-contributing status of any of the buildings in those zones. So nobody's even gone since 1990 to see if these properties actually contain the historic fabric that would have made them eligible to be considered historic within these zones. So what I'm getting at here is, is that there's a process to make buildings historic. It was never done. We have a demolition ordinance on the books that basically says, "Every single property in this city is subject to review, whether it's historic or not, by the historic officer." And if the historic officer, in their opinion, feels it may have historic, instead of following the normal process, which is going through the city council, or going to the historic board and asking them to make a recommendation to the planning board to add it to the master plan, that process is ignored. Instead, it goes right to the historic commission, and the historic commission makes a determination whether it is historic or not and cannot be demolished. Not the process in the MLUL. Conceding, though we don't, that the ordinance does control the actions of the city, there are two problems with what occurred once the permits were in place. One, the ordinance requires that after you've made the, after you've applied for the demolition permit, the historic officer is supposed to provide their written report to the historic commission within 45 days. It does not at all talk about what happens if they fail to do that. It's important in this case because the memo wasn't issued until 48 days later. Now, that might seem like not a lot of time, still, from a administrative process, the city failed to follow their own ordinance. That's one. Two, and this is what Mr. Davino will speak to. In the ordinance, it provides criteria for the historic officer to review if the property is landmarked and in a historic district, and then there's seven criteria to review if it's not landmarked or in a historic district. We're going to contend, and Mr. Davino will provide testimony, that the historic officer failed to review their own ordinance and failed to provide proof that the building was meeting that criteria. So with that, I'll have Mr. Davino step up.
I do. Dennis Michael Davino, last name D-E-V as in Victor, I N O. Let me just get this computer going. Thank you very much for hearing our application today. Some of the things I'm going to talk about might be a little repetitive from what Mr. Lean had testified or made statements on, but I think it's probably best if I follow the program that I set forth so the board has a pretty clear understanding of this property.
Before Mr. Davino starts, I do want to qualify him as an expert.
All right.
Sorry, since we know him, just roll by. Right ahead.
Mr. Davino, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and your license is active today?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I've been before this board before. Thank you again. So as Mr. Lean indicated, this is in reference to a denial that we received on May 15, 2025, for both, a two-page memo for both 240 Newark and another two pages for 250 Newark. My presentation today is going to list five reasons why, and again, going to be a little repetitive for Mr. Lean, five reasons why we believe the building does qualify to be removed, and that the memo that was provided by HPO is inconsistent and misleading. So with that, we'll start with reason number one. Okay, great. So this first slide is the section of the memo that was provided for 240 and 250 Newark. This is the written information that was provided by the HPO. I'm going to read the items that are highlighted. I think that's probably the, let's just see. So the property is within the boundaries of the Italian Village Historic District. Right there, it says that it's in a historic district, even though it is parentheses that says that it's an opinion, a SHPO opinion, it immediately gives the impression that the property is in a historic district. It is not. It's not in a historic, it's in an area that was recommended by SHPO, in some cases 35 years ago, and in another district or another potential area six years ago. But it gives the impression that they're in a district. And in the Lower Newark Avenue Historic District, again, in parentheses, an opinion of eligibility. And that's what Mr. Lean was referring to and what we're referring to, that reason number one is that it really doesn't fall into a historic district. So why this is even brought up in a memo is unknown. It shouldn't be really part of a decision because these districts don't exist. And this is true for 240 as well. There are a couple of sections that we pulled out of the Historic Preservation Master Plan. This is the Lower Avenue, again, Avenue Historic District. This is the SHPO opinion. In the yellow highlight, "The city should consider conducting an intensive level architectural survey to evaluate the eligibility as new construction and alterations to existing historic structures may have led to a loss of integrity." So right there, the master plan is indicating that in this Lower Newark Avenue Historic District, there are areas, there are buildings that may have lost its integrity. And hopefully, when you'll see the rest of the presentation, you'll agree that 240 and 250 has. Table 2 is the section of the master plan that identifies, let me just see if I can move this over. Okay. Table 2 of the master plan in yellow highlight. This table is a compilation of properties that have been identified as eligible. From previous opinions issued at the state and federal level, no additional evaluation was performed to determine if each property retains any integrity to still be considered eligible. As such, there may be properties listed in this table below that may no longer retain their eligibility, their integrity, and require a reevaluation by the SHPO and NPS. And here you list Italian Village District, May 13, 2019, so over six years ago, and the Lower Newark Avenue Historic Area or District, June 13, 1990, over 35 years ago. So with that, I want to also, I want to read a section, I think the board has a copy, or they should have copies of our letter to, once we got the memo, we created a response letter. I have an extra copy. If I could maybe?
The reason is that there were just some dates that the original memo, there were a few typos. In other words, it's not 25 years, the original letter had 25 years of the SHPO, it's actually 35 years ago that they made the recommendation. And then there were just a couple of pages that we referenced from the master plan, and we just wanted to clarify for the board what pages they actually were. And you'll see it on page 2, the changes, the revisions that were made.
Just for the record, Mr. Davino, the letter, I uploaded that as part of my packet, and this is just corrections to a document that has been made available on the portal.
Right. So with that, I want to read some excerpts from our letter that address this reason number one, which is titled, "Misstated Historic District Presence." Paramount to our contention regarding the memorandum is the fact that 240 and 250 Newark are not within any Jersey City municipal designated historic district. Further, these two properties are neither within the State of New Jersey Historic District nor a federally designated National Registry Historic District. Additionally, the HPO consultant has not attempted to show that the properties can individually meet the city's and the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic designation. The May 15 HPO consultant's opinion makes it appear that there is a Lower Newark Avenue District. This is erroneous opinion bordered on, I don't, basically bordered on misrepresentation. Those districts don't exist. The next paragraph continues with identifying what I mentioned earlier, that the SHPO opinion for the Lower Avenue is over 35 years old, and the SHPO opinion for the Italian Village Historic is over six years old. Okay, so we'll go to reason number two. Okay, thank you. So reason number two is identifying, what we did is we put a series of photos together. The first photo you're going to see will be a photo of the 1938 tax plate, what the building looked like in '38 or somewhere thereabouts, and then recent photos. So this is the Newark Avenue. You see the one on the left is taken from the tax plate. I'll be very specific about the components that you see in this photograph that you don't see in the photograph to the right. These are the elements that really make up a historic character of a building, the historic character of a district. If you notice, at the very top of the 1938 plate, you have a very elaborate cornice application with a wide freeze band, two horizontal bands at the tops and the bottom between the windows. You'll also notice that to the left, there's a series of three windows, the center bay of those windows, top and bottom. If you look at our photo to the right, those windows have been removed. So I think it's, you know, the HPO consultant identifies this as still having character. Well, when you take away all the individual historic components that create the historic character of a structure, all you have left is a mass. So to the right, and the windows have been reduced in size, you can see that pretty clearly in the photograph on the right. And then I have more detailed photos that we can go through. I'll take you through the Newark Avenue photos first. This one is pretty apparent on how the entire facade is actually twisted on that very point of the pie shape. It's very, you can see very clearly how these brackets of the cornice have been completely removed and replaced with, they almost look like two-by-fours wrapped with plywood, I would say. And then all of the siding, the original wood siding has been replaced with vinyl. This is the, you know, the former, look at again, the 1938 plate, this whole commercial retail bottom floor was all glass and metal, or glass and wood, now it's been turned into, you know, a stucco application. The wide marquee band has been cladded. The HPO consultant identifies that as a raised seam metal. It's actually just a slip metal that they That's actually just a slip metal that they use is for soffit material that is not even actually used for vertical applications. This is over what the HPO considers a canopy. I think it's important for the board to understand that almost, both of these buildings have essentially been stripped of any character, historic character, and replaced with residential components. I mean, these are items that you pick up at Home Depot. And then I wanted to be very clear about how this cornice was altered. This is what exists now. You can see the brackets again, or some frame material with possibly painted plywood. And this over to the left is what it used to be. We had a wide horizontal band over the windows, a large freeze, a total of actual twelve brackets right now. Those brackets only, the brackets along Newark Street, there's only five. These detailed brackets where there are actually twelve along Newark Ave. So substantial change to the facade and the historic components of this building. This is what we see on Second Street. And then, of course, fire escapes, which are, if another building was installed here, you wouldn't have fire escapes hanging off your building. And then this is the condition of the foundation. You can almost see how the foundation's starting to deteriorate to the bottom and what the siding looks like on Second Street.
Mr. DeVino, if you can allow me, just in chair, I just want to put it on record that Commissioner Burns is here. Commissioner Burns has been present for at least eight or ten minutes. Just want to put that on record.
Commissioner Burns is not going to vote on this.
Right, right. He, yeah, he arrived after when they started. Just wanted to put it on record.
And again, not to be repetitive, but similarly, two forty Newark essentially had the same removal of paramount historic components. The cornice, this one's even more elaborate than two fifty. This almost has a scroll component to it. The windows, again, you could see the windows were reduced in size. Here is a pretty clear understanding of how that lower commercial area was altered. And here's what we have today. This is two forty Newark, the entrance. This is on two forty Newark on the Second Street side. Sorry. This is what has become of the sign band at once was there for, on the two forty Newark. HPO consultant identifies this as a modern storefront. I don't think, as an architect for forty-one years, I would consider this to be a modern storefront. And we have deterioration throughout the building. Here's a sample of some of the water damage and deterioration in various different areas. So reason number two is our photo demonstration of comparing what the building was like in nineteen thirty-eight, or the photograph of, what it had become, and how the building has actually been stripped of any historic elements that was there. And to get them back, you know, I didn't, I don't, I don't see the building being able to be restored at this part of its life. My partner and I, we kind of use, sometimes we use the terms that, you know, there's historic and then there's old. And these buildings are just getting old. They're wood-framed structures. You're only going to get so many years out of a wood-framed building. If you notice, in the city, most of our brick structures historically have held up through the years. And they warrant to be able to be saved and restored. Wood-framed structures, you just, once they are starting to move and they started to deflect, and it affects every part of the building. It affects the facade, affects the roof, it affects interiors, it affects floors. So-- So reason number three is the criteria that Mr. Lean referred to. The section of the ordinance three forty-five dash thirty E, one, point one, is a section of the ordinance that HPC uses to make the evaluations of buildings that are not in a historic area. And again, Mr. Lean was pretty clear about whether or not the municipal land use ordinance is, if this approach is within a municipal land use orders. Nevertheless, this is an ordinance that was passed. And we went through each individual, there's seven categories. The seventh category of eligibility has seven subcategories. So if the board doesn't mind, I'll just read through all seven. And with, you can see the solid bullet point is what the criteria is, and the hollow bullets are our response to those, to that criteria. "Application for demolition permits for the properties not designated as a local landmark or within a locally designated historic district." Specifics that the following seven criteria must be evaluated and reached an opinion about demolition of a nonhistoric district building. Again, it's not, you know, it's, you're going to look at all seven and make an evaluation on what seven's the most important. If you, if it just, if it hits one of those, if it checks one of those boxes, that doesn't mean that it's still eligible. So let's go through the seven. The age of the building, yes, the building is over fifty years old, but all the components that were, that created this building as historic are no longer there. They're much, they're probably maybe forty years old or thirty years old. So the buildings are more than fifty years old. However, the structural integrity of the building is completely overlooked by the consultant's memo. The building lacks of compliance with two thousand twenty-five Construction Code standards, was remarkably absent in the consultant's memorandum. The reason I wrote that is because there are, there, again, for instance, the fire escapes. The, you could see the deflection in the walls. There are things in there, there are items in there that need, that were overlooked by the consultant. I don't want to make assumptions, but it's, I don't know whether or not they took the time to actually study this building and study the area because it, we spent a lot of time there. We all live in this town, and we spend a lot of time downtown. And I think, you know, if you know the area and you walk by the building, I think you'll get the same understanding that we have. "The HPO memorandum themselves state that there are no significant historic association with important people or events, nor potential to yield significant historic data." This is right in the HPO memo. "The architectural style of the properties are unexceptional with like-kind buildings found throughout Jersey City and Hudson County." Item criteria number two, "Whether a building or structure is identified in any component element of the master plan." As Mr. Lean mentioned, that there, the individual property is mentioned, the two forty and/or two fifty is only mentioned as a border of a district that doesn't actually exist. "Whether the building or structure is associated with an event that have made significant contributions to the board's patterns, broad pattern of the local, state, and/or national history." The HPO memo states that "there are no significant historic association with important people or events, nor potential to yield significant historic data." "Whether the building or structure was associated with the life of a person who made a significant contribution to local, state, and/or national history." Again, the HPO memo states that "there are no significant historic association with important people." "Whether the building or structure embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or that represents the work of a master, or that possesses high artistic value, or that represents a significant and is distinguishable entity whose components may lack individual distinction, most especially if no other or very few buildings or structures with the same association has survived." The buildings are comments, our response, our, the building structure components are of wood-framed walls. Again, I don't want to be repetitive, but it's wood-framed walls, wood joists members. The structural system holds no unique characteristics. The original cornice, freeze, and storefront designs were, would have possessed a degree of architectural, but they're no longer there. "Whether the building or structure has yielded or may be responsible for likely to yield information about a prehistoric or historic event." Again, a pre-history, should I say. Again, the HPO memo states that "there are no significant historic association with important people or events." "Whether the building or structure maintains integrity," and so on. I think it's, let me get down to, yeah, okay. "Whether the building or structure maintains integrity." Location, the place where the, the place where the property was constructed or the place where the historic event occurred. "No historic event ever took place here. As it is to be expected, the buildings ought to be the same location." I'm assuming they mean that the building ever get moved. And no, the building never, you know, you can pick a building up and move it to a different location. So I'm assuming that's what this criteria is identifying, but this building, no, it has not moved. It's in the same location, has the same mass component, mass layout that probably was there when it was originally constructed. But again, I want to just hammer home that all the elements, historic elements, are no longer there. "Setting the physical environment of the property." The site does possess a unique form, which is the result of a diagonal line intersecting a grid. We see it all over in various different parts of Jersey City, of course, New York. When you have a grid pattern, street pattern, and then you bifurcate that with a diagonal, in this case, I think it's Second Street, you end up with these pie-shaped lots. Yes, they're unique. They're unique in every, in every, in every city that decides to create this sort of street pattern. So that's not going to change. Whether this building was there or another building was there, that diagonal or pie shape will always, will always remain the same. "Materials, the physical elements that were combined or deposited during a particular period of time, a particular pattern, or configuration to form the properties." Again, the deep freeze board combined with more elaborate bracketing of the cornice is unique to the nineteenth-century styles, as well as the expanded commercial glass elements. However, none of these exist. "Workmanship, the physical evidence of the craftsmen, of the crafts of the particular culture or people during any given period in history." "The property's integrity of material and workmanship has been substantially altered by replacement materials to bear no resemblance at all to the original crafts of the late nineteenth-century culture and people during that particular period in history." "The feeling." And I think, I got a couple more plates to go over, and I think it falls into this item, the feeling, and the feeling that you get when you're on the street in front of this building. "The property expresses or feeling of the historic sense of the late nineteenth century to the early twentieth century no longer exists. This is indicated by the photographic evidence presented in this letter and on the screen tonight. This feeling of the property's expression of any historic sense simply cannot be reproduced without bending or not breaking the Secretary of the Interior standards to not exactly replicate what was originally constructed." With that, I think I would want to move over to the next item. I'm not, you know, I think we can skip reason number four because Mr. Lean, item number four is in reference to the forty-five days that HPC had to respond. And I'll be very brief. We originally submitted it in January. We did not, we got a response, I think, in March that said that it needed to be bifurcated. We, two forty and two fifty had to be separate applications. We then did that on March fifth. We then sent about six follow-up emails, which were unresponsive. We then wrote a letter to the director on May fourteenth, and then on May fifteenth, the memo showed up. All in all, it was a hundred and eleven days from the day it was originally submitted. Seventy, from March fifth to May fifteenth was seventy days and fifty working days. So all around, it's over and above the forty-five days allotment. The last reason, I think, is probably in my, as an architect, is more compelling because it gives, it falls in that feeling category of what you feel like when you're on the street and you're walking along all the other neighboring buildings, and then you see two forty and two fifty. So these buildings are all on Newark Avenue. You can see how the building to the left, I think that is two fifty-three Newark. The building to the right at two fifty-five Newark is relatively new. A lot of the buildings on Newark Avenue opposite this property have been, are new. I think there was a large parking lot there back in the eighties, and they built some new buildings. But you can see that one building, that five-story brick building, it's pretty clear what the historic components are and how well they can be maintained if they're of, constructed of a material that has a longer lifespan. Going down Newark, these are all photographs of the newer buildings on Newark. Opposite that, this is two, looks like two forty-eight Newark. And then on the opposite side, here's another building. You can see the elaborate cornice work, the eyebrow stone heads, head, window heads, and sills. And this is, this is two forty and two fifty Newark. Last, last one, and then we'll close up. These are the brick structures on Second Street opposite two forty and two fifty Newark. There's two fifty-eight. Two fifty-eight Newark is actually on Second Street. It's right where the point starts. So you can see, again, the elaborate cornice work at the top, the almost scalloped freeze board, still being maintained. Moving north on Newark, on Second Street, again, brick buildings. Some changes to the facade, but still has historic significance. The bottom section where the commercial strips are, again, you could see that they have been altered somewhat, but can still serve as, with historic integrity. Again, a little bit further north on Second Street, and I want to bring the board's attention to the cornice. The cornice in all these historic buildings are a major architectural component that helps solidify its character and its integrity. And then this is the building right next to, right next to two forty. This is two thirty-eight, two thirty-eight, two thirty-six, two thirty-eight Newark. And then this is what we have at two fifty and two forty on Second Street. So that's, that's my presentation. I could close by just ending it with a segment from our letter. "In summary, the first listed historic preservation goals for the city of Jersey City is to balance new development in the city within the preservation of the historic building and district. The consultant's report categorically fails-- The Cook Consultants' Report categorically fails to reach this goal for the following summary. The buildings are not in an authorized historic district. The buildings are not identified as historic buildings within the city's standards of historic designation. The buildings meet all of the criteria for demolition under the city's seven listed criteria for justifying a determination, uh, of demolition of the building outside of the authorized historic district. The consultant's determination memo was substantially outside of the maximum 45-day window for the pre, the preparation and delivery of their determination. This alone makes determination null and void. That, I do miss the, the Paglia and, uh, Mr. Lean can debate that one. Uh, the physical obsolescence of the building was dramatically overlooked for, uh, for no good reason by HBO consultant in arriving at their flawed opinion. Sorry to use those words, but, uh, I think I got a little, um, yeah, a little upset when I, uh, read the memo. This reason alone indicated that the need for demolition by itself, apart from all other considerations, a physical renewal of the night, of the actual 2025 photo. Both sides of the building confirmed that there had been numerous, uh, serious catastrophic removal of all distinguishable, and I'll say historic architectural features. Uh, the entire architectural fabric of the facade of the, of the, uh, new building was removed long ti, a long time ago. And the H P O consultant erroneously contends that their, that their removal is of little consequence. So, in my opinion, the memo is a bit flawed and I think it's misleading and really off base for what, um, for what we presented tonight. That's it.
Thank you.
I have no questions, uh, for Mr. Davino unless the board has to follow up.
Um, at this time, um, first of all, is there anyone from the public that wants to step forward and say, make any comments? Okay, if not, then commissioners, do you have any questions that you want to ask before I have the staff report out?
So I just have one question, excuse me. Good evening, what was the original facade of the building? Cause it looked like brick, but then it looked like?
No, it was, uh, from what we can tell, it looks like it might've been a cedar, a wood siding.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so is that, do, did we determine or did you determine at any point? Um, when people usually put on siding on a house, they usually just put it right over the existing facade. So was it determined that possibly when that's removed, there is cedar underneath it?
It seems as if, when you look at the photos, that they may have gone over everything with plywood and then put the, um, put the, the vinyl over that. Because, uh, based on how the horizontal bands and the freeze board, there's no, uh, there's no remnants of that. If, if they were just to go over it, you would see maybe little bumps or they might've just kept those freeze boards or they would've kept the horizontal bands and sided right to it. But in order to cover that, because those boards, uh, typically would have been extended beyond the siding, uh, plane. It seems as if to me that they just put plywood over everything and then they, on top of that, they put the vinyl.
Okay, thank you.
So it could be, um, clapboard or something like that underneath or?
Under the plywood, possibly, yeah. Unless it was so badly damaged that they removed it, but yeah.
Was, did anyone remove anything to see what's underneath there or?
No.
Was there a structural report or anything like that?
No.
Was historic at the historic meeting?
We, we didn't have any structural reports done. Uh, we did have a structural engineer, uh, look at some of the joists on the first floor. Uh, he, and he was concerned about it, but we didn't do a structural report on the building, no.
Cause I know when I had a situation historic definitely came out and did all their moving and removing things to check things and everything else when they made their decision. So it's kind of interesting that they didn't do that if.
Well, it's not a historic building. It's, this is, uh, again, I, I just think we need to look at this building because it's, it's, it's made of wood. You know, it's a framed building. It doesn't have the lifespan that we all wanted to have if it was a brick building. And to, to historic it would be a substantial cost and if, not enough it's possible without a, a total gut and, uh, and so.
So, so I just have to say this based on your comment. Um, so I have a home that was built in 1853. It's all solid wood, the frame, everything, and it's still standing.
It was taken care of, for sure.
Okay, so I think we need to hear from the staff.
Can I, I have a question. Um, do you have any architectural plan as far as what you intend to do? What kind of structure or that still works?
I mean, I, I know that this site allows a five-story building because it's in a neighborhood commercial one zone, so that's all I know.
And how do, how many units do you intend to put in there? You don't know?
Okay, I think tonight just is about demolition and not to take a look at the plans to know what's going on.
No, I wanted to know what they're gonna do with it.
Okay.
Again, it's a neighborhood commercial, so I would think they're going to keep commercial on the lower level and residential above.
Okay, okay. All right, um, if we have no other questions from the commissioners, I'd like to hear from staff.
Michael's really gonna touch on a lot of the historic portion of it. Um, I just want to mention, I just want to touch base on the, I guess, the section 105 of the general ordinance that pretty much kind of, I would say, starts the entire historic process, how, how everything pretty much ties together. So city council, um, they approved an ordinance, um, on February 13th, 2025, um, which pretty much states, pretty much states why historic conducts their review, pretty much how the zoning officer has the ability to refer things to or refer items to H P C. Um, so this is a, that's a city council matter. City council approved this process for things to go in this way. Um, if it's not adhering to the M L U L, well, that's, that's something that the, uh, city, that should be addressed at the city council level. Unfortunately, that's, that's above this board to decide on. Um, I'll let Michael pretty much touch, touch base on the historic side of it.
Sure, and just to clarify, uh, that ordinance just, uh, codified what we were already doing. It was still the same standards for review that we've had, um, since I think, uh, we started reviewing demolition or demolition cases, uh, which was a number of years ago. Um, the only thing that that codified was removing what, uh, was mentioned earlier. Those are the determinations of significance. Uh, those were a staff memo that went out to applicants that stated, you know, we think it has or doesn't have, uh, significance. Um, the court struck that down and so we were just codifying that for building permits, uh, for demolition permit, which is a building permit, our review, when it is denied, it has to go to the H P C for review, which is what happened in this case. Um, just to kind of go through, um, you know, we are not looking to, you know, designate this property as historic. I think that's something that, uh, I would like to make clear. Um, it's, it's not like because of this decision, they will have to come to the H P C if they want to replace their windows or anything like that. Um, this determination by the H P C, uh, just states that the property has enough historic significance that, uh, they recommended it not be denied to the zoning officer. Um, as was stated, the master plan, uh, which is kind of the first spot we review these properties through, uh, does mention both of those eligible historic districts. Um, Jersey City does not operate in a vacuum. We are part of the larger New Jersey state and the New Jersey state Historic Preservation Office did have both of those opinions on the districts, um, which does not make them local historic districts or local landmarks, um, but they still do maintain that status of eligible historic districts as is stated in the memo. Um, and so from my professional opinion, um, and I think I agree with Chair Coyle when she stated, uh, I've worked on plenty of reviews of buildings while with Jersey City and before of frame structures from the 17th, 18th century, uh, that are still standing. And, uh, they do require maintenance, but that doesn't mean that they, you know, don't have any historic integrity. Um, and so for myself, uh, when, when I'm reviewing these properties, uh, we do, we have the seven factors that are listed out in the ordinance as well as the seven sub-factors for part seven. Um, these actually are reflective of the National Register Criteria for Historic Review. Um, they're the same criteria that you would use if you were going to nominate something to the National Register. Um, and when we're looking at these things, uh, it's not a requirement that they meet all of them. I think that is actually incredibly rare. Uh, off the top of my head, I cannot think of a single property throughout the entire country that meets all of the criteria. Instead, generally, you want to meet one of the four criteria as well as, um, the criteria for integrity. Um, so for this property, staff felt that the building maintained a distinctive characteristic, um, type, period or method of construction, um, so a distinctive architectural style. And, uh, that be, you know, in justifying that the property also has integrity. Um, the property has integrity of, or the properties, both of them have integrity of location, setting, feeling and association in accordance with that ordinance. Um, they do have some material changes on the outside, but as was stated, a lot of times these are, um, just superficial changes on the outside. A lot of times those historic materials all are left underneath them and, uh, through some exploratory demo. Um, because this is not within a historic district, uh, I can, I cannot ask them to go out and do exploratory demo. I cannot require any of those things like we do with Historic Preservation Commission applications. But, uh, it is very likely that many of these, uh, materials are, remain extent underneath, uh, the modern changes. Um, I think that is mainly, uh, kind of how I went through it. Um, you know, looking at the 1938 tax card photo, I think that you can see a lot of, um, feeling and association, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Davino was able to show the properties surrounding it. And, uh, from staff and the H P C's perspective, uh, the buildings are really in conversation. The historic properties that are there, um, the frame structures really add kind of an anchoring point on the corner, uh, between the, um, brick buildings and the frame. Uh, it creates kind of a very nice aesthetic, uh, very nice architectural significance of integrity and location, uh, setting throughout those, throughout that area. And the removal of those properties would, um, kind of change the conversation that the buildings are happening, uh, around it. I would be happy to answer any other questions of the commissioners.
Do commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned, you just mentioned something. Um, you said that this was not to deny the zoning official her ability to deal with the historic aspect of this, meaning, uh, it's not historic anymore. And it almost sounded like, that's why I want to clarify it, that she still has the ability to determine this not historic or it could be, something else may have to happen to it later on. But the power lies there, like we're not overturning, turning her decision, the sort of what you said.
So the H P C's, is a recommendation to, to recommend denial of the prior approval for a building permit. Um, the property could be, uh, designated a, a local historic property or district in the future.
Well, you said you weren't moving forward on that anyway, so.
That's not something that we're doing at the moment, yes.
And then you said something after that, that's why I'm trying to remember what you said. You, you said that you weren't intending to do that, but then you mentioned that this was really to preserve.
Oh, the, the kind of like the streetscape and the property, um, that it has enough historic significance uh, to save these individual properties, um, that doesn't really affect the district, you know, the eligible districts as a whole.
So here's the basis of my question. So I'm just trying to follow along procedural wise where everything leads to in the end. So what you said before, it's like historic said, they denied it, they denied the demolition permit and in order for the zoning officers to have the power to determine what happens next with respect to that. Obviously, she upheld it. So it sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe Vinnie, it sounds to me that there's still power in the zoning officer's possession to still, let's say, you guys, if we voted, if we vote it down, let's say, I'm assuming it goes back to one of two things. Go to court or it goes to historic, you, the officer, and you guys hash out what you're gonna do with it or how you want to approach it from that point forward, correct?
Uh, the zoning, the zoning officer did deny the permit, um, the prior approval. Um, so the permit would be denied and then it would up, be up to the applicant.
Yeah, so if they, if they continued to want to do a project there, it would have to, one, fall on the purview of being treated as historic, not historic, maybe historic. I mean, or would there be some kind of, like we said, no one's really moved anything to determine. It might be a piece of junk on there. Then again, it could be something wonderful, because it doesn't seem like anything's there. So it's like we're making a decision.
Wait a second, we're going off the rails here.
Right.
What we're really deciding is whether this, uh, permit to demolish the building is proper or not.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
And so they say, uh, the denial of that application was improper.
Okay.
And he's saying it's improper for three reasons.
Got you, I know.
The first two have nothing to do with us.
Correct.
The first two is that this ordinance is somehow volatile or barata, that's not us.
Everybody else has got that.
The second thing is that the, uh, zoning officer wrote, uh, 48 days instead of 45. That's not going to be our purview anyway. Some other court's gonna decide that. But the thing that we have to decide right now is whether Mr. Davino's analysis of our ordinance, uh, criteria was met or not. And our, uh, preservation person is saying that under our ordinance, uh, this building should not be demolished because it meets these criteria. And that's what we're deciding.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Isn't that what we're talking about? We're not talking about these other two issues. We're simply talking about that.
Yes, and these, these items, uh, Mr. Davino presented, uh, to the H P C as well as I gave my testimony, the same testimony that I gave here. And, uh, the H P C took a vote and voted to deny the, uh, to recommend denial of the prior approval.
And I guess what we're saying is that the next steps would, I mean, tonight is just to decide what we're gonna do here, if we're gonna uphold that or not. And then the next steps, they would either have to talk with and discuss with and have a dialogue onto how they're going to work with the historic preservation. And then they'd have to come back to us maybe for permits, but other than that, we have no other decision for tonight.
I'll say the reason why I'm asking this, and this has to do exactly what we're talking about. And that is, it, it, if it, if it's not his, like I said, it seems to me that whatever was said in historic, that's why they're here, because it was overturning that and everything else. That's why we're here voting on whether to do that. It seemed like to me at this moment, I have no clue for the base of the decision other than the recommendations of this and that, but based upon what? I mean, not that I have to determine that, but it's still very vague to me. The basis on the witches, is it historic, is it not? No one looked underneath. I saw his thing, but I know I had a house like, like this coil, it's clapboard and everything else. And, you know, it could be wonderful on there or it could just have to be demolished when you open it up. Who knows? I don't know that.
So I will say, right, um, for a property being deemed historic in Jersey City means that any applic, any work they do to the property means they have to apply to the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, that will not be the case with this. Uh, they, if they wish to do any future work to the property, uh, they would follow the same procedures that every other person that's not living within one of the historic district follows. They would apply, if it's an as-of-right project to the Division of Zoning or if it requires variances or, um, site plan approval, then they would apply to, uh, the Planning Board or Zoning Board, um, as needed. Uh, that does not mean that Historic Preservation Staff, we kind of operate under a few roles within the city. We have multiple different hats. One of those is that we do offer, um, consult to the Planning Board staff. As I'm sure many of you guys have seen, uh, Mr. Dan Riordan or Maggie O'Neill has been here and presented to the zoning board many a time, uh, to discuss properties that had historic input, um, but they would not be required to come to the Historic Preservation Commission for applications. Uh, that is what I mean when I say that, this is not deeming it historic, right? Um, this is not circumventing that route of it going to the H P C, going to Planning Board and then going to city council to determine that something is historic, uh, as in a local historic district or a local individual landmark.
And this was on the SHIPgo list for, it said in his thing, like since 1990 or something, is that correct?
So one of the.
Eligibility.
One of the opinions of eligibility was from 1990. The other one was from, I believe, like 2020 or 2019, I think 2019.
And do you know, has anyone ever tried and pursued, trying to make that more formalized or official? I mean, I don't, that's why I'm asking, maybe you guys.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Both of those are before my time with the city.
I got you, I got you. So maybe you came across something in doing all this stuff, preparing.
No, generally, SHIPgo does do a lot of investigatory work throughout the state, and it is a very helpful resource to local municipalities, because then we are able to free up our focus to search and investigate other areas.
So the status it was in 1990 is basically the same status it is at this moment, as far as SHIPgo is concerned?
Correct.
Any other commissioners?
Can I just get a point of clarity from Mr. La Paglia? You said we were seeking for this board to overturn it on three grounds, but that one and two, we're not, we're not properly before this board.
Yes.
I believe one is, is asking the board to, to determine in our favor because of a mistake of law, which I think this board can.
No, you're asking us to overturn the city ordinance.
No, I want to be clear. There was, there's no request, I'm saying that there was a jurisdictional problem, and that application should have never been sent to the historic board, which is why I, it's a mistake of law, it should never, it's not a historic property, we just heard that, should never have been sent to the historic board.
That's not what our ordinance says, though. Our ordinance is saying an application for a demolition permit for properties not designated as a local landmark or within a locally designated historic district.
I understand.
That's what we're talking about.
I'm asking, I'm asking them to consider the fact that it was, that that is violative of the MLUL, and the action to send it to the historic board was violative of the MLUL.
Right, and that's another way of saying that this ordinance.
This board doesn't have the power to, to throw out an ordinance. I'm not asking for the, I'm asking for the board to consider that there was a jurisdictional issue. I just want to be clear on that.
Sounds to me the same thing.
The, this board doesn't have the power, so that's not what I'm asking for this evening. And then secondly, just as far as the, the timing, that, that's an administrative failure that I think this board can also consider. I just wanted clarity on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we would take a vote, and staff has, okay? Now you have to craft the question as to how we had done this, okay? So we're taking a vote at this time to uphold the decision of the Historic Commission or the zoning officer not to demolish, to deny demolition as.
Well, let's put it this way.
Go ahead. I need you to have it written in good legal vernacular.
Actually, you're using the word affirm and deny in two different ways, which is, so let's put it this way. All right. So if we, if the, if the motion, yeah, if the motion is to affirm this appeal, it means you're overturning the decision of the zoning officer. Let's look at it that way. If you, if the motion is to deny this appeal, it means we're affirming the decision of the zoning officer. So let's look at it simplistically that way.
So I think what we need to do is to get a motion to deny the appeal. That is before us tonight to dem, to, for demolition of.
If you, if somebody is going to move to deny the appeal.
Right.
It means we're affirming what the zoning officer said.
So I need someone, I need a, a motion to deny the appeal, to demolish the building.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny Z, case Z2025-0059, as presented to the board this evening.
Can I get a second? Okay, we have a second? So we are now voting to deny the appeal before us. Mr. Beasley, please take a vote.
Yes, Commissioner D'Angelo?
Yes, so you're voting to deny the appeal. Okay, so yes.
So it's a, yeah, yes is a denial.
That's a yes.
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 Commissioner Allen?
So last meeting, we heard a similar case, you know, similar points brought up also, and you know, we stuck, we stuck to our guns. I'm going to make the decision to stick to my guns. I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the board, and I'm going to say no.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's, that's okay. Commissioner Zablucki?
Okay, so similar to what Commissioner Allen said, there's some issues here. There's, it's pretty obviously that the ordinance and some other things seem to be a little like Swiss cheese when it comes to understanding this. But that's not our jurisdiction up here, it really isn't. Unfortunately, it's, it gets our zoning officer caught up in this stuff as well, with the crossover between Historic Preservation, the board, and us at zoning. At this point, I mean, considering what's been presented, I, I really don't know if there's historical value to it or not. And when that's the case, the only thing we do, like we tried to do in, in previous cases and remain consistent, is to try and, you know, listen to the recommendations of our staff and, and work with them. I hope that whatever happens, you know, obviously, the location, the project, whatever happens to be in the future, and certainly, it can't remain looking like that. But like I said, it's the unknown. So with that, I vote yes.
No, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Rule?
I sort of agree to it, Carl, and this is a difficult decision, because the building does look rundown. I mean, I, I don't, I don't feel now, I think maybe you should have gone back to the Historical Society or somebody else to try to work it out with them and see what they said, because right now, this, as far as zoning, I, I don't know. I really, I would have to vote yes, because I don't know enough about it to say otherwise. So, yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, motion to deny case Z2024-0059 carries. There are five commissioners voting yes, one commissioner, one commissioner voting no.
Okay, thank you.
Just one clarification, now we, I think the motion was just made on one.
Yes, I read just, yes, I just read item nine. And then I'm assuming we would have to do item 10 now.
The same motion, I would assume, you're making?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny case Z2025-0060, as presented to the board this evening.
Can I get a second?
Okay, Commissioner D'Angelo?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Zablucki?
The same one as before, that would be yes, correct, to deny?
Yes. Vice Chair Rule?
Yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, motion to deny case Z2024-0060 carries with five commissioners voting yes, one commissioner voting no.
Thank you.
Okay, Iris, do you need a break? Before we start the next case?
Yes, please.
Sure, we, we're all here. Okay, let's begin. Okay, so at this time, we are going to hear case Z2025-0061, 1051 Garfield Avenue. It is again, appeal to the zoning officer to deny demolition. Okay, Mr. Vertibello?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Robert Vertibello from the law firm of Connell Foley. As a preliminary matter, this is a notice case. We did upload the affidavit, proof of service and mailing and affidavit of publication. However, I have the originals with me this evening that will mark as Exhibit A1. Thank you. So this is an application, this is also an A appeal, slightly different fact scenario than the previous cases. This involves a, the existing public service, electric and gas, otherwise known as PSENG Substation, that's located at 1051 Garfield Avenue. This is one of those rare cases where the property is still being used and it's original function. PSENG is very proud of that fact. That facility has been used continuously for over 100 years. We're hoping that it stays in operation for another 100 years. However, our, our, our situation, and the reason why we're here this evening, is that the station needs to be upgraded. And because of constraints, we have to replace that building and construct a new substation. That, that was the reason for the demolition permit. You'll hear from our experts this evening as to why that is the case. This board does have the power to hear that. I know staff issued a memo earlier today, laying a few things out. I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that were not in the staff memo. This board does have the ability, this is essentially a de novo review. This board does have the power and ability to apply zoning concepts such as undue hardship, which is really what we're here for this evening, is the hardship caused by the fact that we cannot keep the existing building on the site. Again, you'll hear from our experts, this isn't a situation where we can just swap out equipment. This is more complicated than that. We do have a, our project engineer here this evening, who will take the board through that. And we also have our project planner, our professional planner, that will go through the positive and negative criteria. In a nutshell, what we're arguing here this evening is that the benefits of constructing a new substation, which necessitate the removal of the old substation, outweigh the benefits of historic preservation. It's not that PSENG is against historic preservation, it's just that in this particular situation, at this particular location, we cannot maintain the old and bring in the new. And given the amount of growth that's occurred in Jersey City, I don't have to remind anybody on this board that there's been a tremendous amount of growth in Jersey City. There is a tremendous amount of draw that's coming down in the future with regards to the need for additional energy demands. And as a result of that, we are in a situation where unfortunately, the, the public interest, for lack of a better term, of historic preservation needs to yield to the ability of PSENG to continue to provide safe, efficient, and reliable energy. With that, my first witness here this evening is the, is the project manager, Frank DiGiacomo, who I'm presenting merely, not merely, but I'm presenting as a fact witness, not as an expert, just to give the board some context as to what this project is and the, the importance of it. Mr. DiGiacomo? And you'll be sworn in first.
Okay.
I do. Frank DiGiacomo. Yeah, D.I. capital G.I.A.C.O.M.O.
Mr. DiGiacomo, just, if you could start off by just explaining your role in this project and your educational background and experience?
Yes, I'm a, I graduated from college, University of Dayton, in 1972. I've been working around the country and the world on power plants, refineries, everything you can think of over the last 53 years. All right, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, civil engineer. And I've been working on this project for three years. Can I continue?
Yes, please continue.
But prior to me beginning on this project three years ago, our planning group in public service was working on this, analyzing the need for power, not only at, you know, six years ago, but into the future. And they typically go five, 10, 15 years into the future, looking at what the load growth is going to be. All right, and in Jersey City's situation, it's tremendous. And now, as recently, when you talk about AI, the demand for power is going to increase more, and this station is planned to take care of that. All right, the situation now is, we've purchased all of the equipment, major equipment, I'll call it, for the project. And it's due to arrive starting in 2027. All right, and this, this plant will go in service right now, late 2028 or early 2029. Moving forward, though, the building as it exists now, we can't put all the equipment that the project needs in that building. We need to put, put some, we would have to put more outside of that old, older building. And the plot, the plot does not have space for that remaining equipment. So in essence, without taking down this building, we're not going to be able to build this project. And that's going to be, could put a significant load strain on Jersey City, and we don't want that to happen, because you could, could be talking brownouts. And public service wants to maintain reliability. We want to make sure that there's enough power for constituents, the Jersey City residents, you know, and for, as we recognize, the continued growth of office buildings, apartments, some commercial buildings in and around Garfield, Garfield Station, you know, that's where the impact's coming from. And in addition, because of reliability issues, the Fairmount project that we built and finished a few years ago, one in Greenville that is up in operation, and it's going, and we're looking to upgrade that one also, those are all tied together. So that if you have a demand in, in another area that is serviced by the Fairmount station, you know, they can rely on some help, call it help, from this Garfield station. And in addition, underground circuits and above-ground circuits will be increased from 4 KV supply systems to 13 KV supply systems. All right, and what that allows you to do is at a higher level, you can have more power being distributed out from the Garfield station. All right, and that's, that's the main purpose of this project, is to maintain reliability to the people of Jersey City.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if there are any questions, we just wanted to provide some background context. Otherwise, I'll move on to my next witness.
We'll hold out questions till the end.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, if you don't mind me interjecting, can you make sure that microphone's on, actually? Just so that, yeah, can you? Yeah.
Now I think it's on. Okay. All right, my next witness is the project engineer. If you could please state your name for the record and your educational background and experience?
Yes, my name is Caleb Peterson, that's P.E.T.E.R.S.O.N. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Nebraska. I'm also a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey, with over 12 years of experience working on substation projects around the country, and 10 years of experience working on projects with PSENG. I do.
I knew I was missing something. I knew I was missing something. Just to clarify, is the board accepting of Mr. Peterson as an expert? Thank you, Mr. Peterson, if you could explain for the board why this particular substation needs to be upgraded and replaced and the complications of trying to reutilize the existing structure?
Sure, can do. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the, the building was first constructed in nineteen oh seven to nineteen oh nine, it was expanded in nineteen sixteen to nineteen twenty-seven.
Can you make sure the mic is on? Yeah, the light should turn green.
Oh, there we go. A little hot. Like Mr. Vertebello said, we're very proud of the fact that this building has stood the test of time for this long, but I think it should be made clear that, you know, it's been this way because it was built under certain configurations and for certain functions for it to operate under, but based off of the needs for load growth like previously stated, we believe that this building is not sufficient to meet those needs. According to the International Building Code, facilities like this are considered what's called a essential facility or a risk category four, and so with that, there are very stringent requirements for the structural designs to make sure that they are less likely to sustain damage under the same conditions that a structure with a lower, lower importance factor, this intent is to enhance the structure's performance based on its use or need to remain in operation during or after a disaster, the biggest impact this has a lot of times is on seismic designs or if there was an earthquake load, so with that and the high importance of this, this facility, there is a lot of structural analysis and design and steel that would need to be required for a building if we were to stay to, to start over from scratch, based off of that, the current building configuration is not up to any code, to current codes in any way, and there would need to be a lot of refurbishing just to get it to meet code requirements for its existing conditions. There's also a significant difference in terms of the equipment that we're trying to put in in terms of loads, the equipment's called a gas insulated substation, and this is very dense, very large equipment that has substantially higher loads than what the building was initially designed for, so with that, having to bring it up to code and for these new loads that we would be putting into the building, there would be a lot of additional steel that would need to be placed to reinforce the superstructure, which we have concerns would first of all, reduce the allowable space to actually make the, the equipment fit into the building. Beyond the nature of adding more steel to meet the code, the configuration just is also not sized properly in terms of height. If I go to the second page of this, this is a cross-section showing the existing building and what would be the equipment layout that would need to be installed, the way that it is currently configured, we need to put in a crane in order to place the materials and also be able to do proper maintenance to remove items if they needed to be replaced because they were damaged or they failed, with that, there need to be certain requirements in terms of how much separation we have from the, the equipment to the crane, and based off of that, we would be needing to put this crane already into what is the, the roof truss system of the building superstructure, and so with that, we would essentially have to remove the roof if we were trying to make all this equipment fit and work, with that, we have significant concerns of the moment we start to do some of these removals and demolitions, that there's going to be significant damage to the rest of the building superstructure and some of the architectural features that would essentially mean that the building would have to be completely torn down, in our opinion. There's also some complications too with, with just the size and the layout of this building to make it work, one of the interesting ones is, we need to put in what's called a, a switchgear, and the configuration that is needed for this is what's called a breaker and a half configuration, where there usually are two rows side by side, but based off the building layout, there would need to be essentially a, a straight run as shown here, which makes the installation for the cables and connections a lot more difficult and, and very hard to maintain, one of the most significant concerns though, we have though, is in order to bring in the circuits in and out of the station, the only feasible location would be having us to install these underground circuits directly underneath the building as it currently exists, so we're talking about coring and drilling blindly to install underground duct banks directly underneath the existing building foundation. To, to even do something like this, you would need to still have a, what's called a, a receiving hole that is essentially, I think it was like, we estimated to be around a thirty foot by thirty foot by fifteen foot deep hole, and so there's even space constraints and concerns of being able to achieve something like that, but the concern of, of doing this underneath the existing building would potentially pose risks for undermining the foundations and potentially causing structural damage to the building. Additionally, with the fact that the loads are going to be substantially higher than what was anticipated with the existing building, there's a high likelihood that the foundations would need to be increased or put on a deep foundation system based off of the geotech reports that we have that show the, the soil conditions are not very favorable, and so with that, we were, we'd be needing to take down sections of the building in order to bring in the necessary equipment to install these, these foundations to meet codes and strength requirements. I know we provided testimony previously to the historic board, and one of the potential options that was provided was, why don't we see about maybe just making the foundations deeper, like digging down deeper, so that way you're not having to necessarily take off the roof of the building, but in a similar manner, I think there's a lot of concerns with that in terms of the outer facade of the building, it is a brick style CMU type of facade, and these have very low tolerance when it comes to vibrations, movements, any type of settlement and displacement will cause cracking more than likely, and so with the, the needs for foundation upgrades, steel installations, we would also need to cut additional holes to have the necessary air conditioning and heating, because this equipment is very temperature sensitive and would need to be maintained at all times, the new cuts that we've been, need to be made just to bring in the equipment itself because there's not a current door opening large enough to bring in everything in, and the, the need to either dig down deep or, or replace the roof poses significant concerns that we would feel that the building in itself would be damaged enough during construction that it would not be viable to keep. Beyond that, there's also just safety concerns with the, the existing station as it stands, if we were to keep the building and put in all the necessary equipment, there essentially would just be one drive path in and out of the station, shown in this, in this view, and with that, that would require all equipment vehicles or people coming to do maintenance to have to drive in and back out blindly directly onto Garfield Avenue, which is a very congested street, and so there's significant concerns, especially with P S E and G, one of their, their top priorities is safety for their employees and safety in providing safe energy, and so the, the needs for construction and what this would mean for the station, I think combines to an overall concern of being able to keep their employees and their construction contractors safe when they were having to do this demolition, demolition work.
Mr. Peterson, would it be fair to say, based on your review and what you've testified here this evening, that essentially this existing building is functionally obsolete?
I would agree with that.
Thank you, no further questions, I don't know if the board has any questions for Mr. Peterson.
Are you bringing forth any other witnesses right now?
Yes, I have one more witness.
Okay, we'll hear everyone, then we'll ask our questions afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness will be our project planner, Noreen Merainer. So this time we'll get her sworn in first.
I so swear. My name is Noreen Merainer, M E R A I N E R, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been licensed as a planner since nineteen ninety-two, I represent Public Service Electric and Gas Company, I am employed by P S E and G for twenty-seven years, my title is Licensing Project Manager, and I'm responsible for securing environmental and land use permits for company facilities, I have a bachelor's and two master's degrees, I also have certification as a project management professional, I've testified in several dozen municipalities, including Jersey City, and was last here before this board in two thousand and seventeen for Greenville Substation, which is down the street, this station, Garfield Avenue Substation, is one zero five one Garfield Avenue, Greenville Substation is at forty-one Garfield Avenue, it's called Greenville because that's the section of Jersey City that it's in.
We would present Ms. Merainer as a...
Yes, we'll accept her qualifications, but I don't remember you from twenty seventeen. I think I was here, but I, that's okay though, that's alright. Yes, the criteria, yeah. Just don't ask me what I had for breakfast this morning.
Ms. Merainer, if you could take the board through the balancing of the interests in terms of maintaining the existing building versus replacing the building?
I will, but first I'd like to preface my statements by explaining that P S E and G has worked collaboratively with Jersey City for decades to build a modern, state-of-the-art electric system, this is specifically to promote Jersey City's reputation as a world-class city with world-class utilities, we've been upgrading substations in Jersey City for over fifteen years, I personally have worked on most of these stations, we have twelve switching stations and substations in Jersey City, in the last fifteen years, we've upgraded five and built one new one, also, during that same time, we've upgraded six stations in surrounding municipalities, Hoboken, Bayonne, Carney, all in Hudson County, all of you know the growth in Jersey City, I've only been watching since the nineteen eighties, you've been watching even longer, you know the development pressures, we've been working before myself, actually, my colleagues who have since retired, worked very closely with the current planet, or the past planning director, Bob Cotter, and his staff, all to establish substations in Jersey City. So what we started doing in two thousand and nineteen is looking at Garfield Avenue Substation, we knew we were going to have to improve it eventually, we already did most of the stations in the north, what we do essentially is follow the development patterns, we follow development, we don't start development, Jersey City starts to develop, we follow and make sure you have sufficient power, so generally, we'll go to the areas that are under development pressure and have the most electric demand, so in two thousand and nineteen, we started looking, what are we gonna do for Garfield Avenue, we know how old this station is, Caleb already explained, we're talking about a station that's over a hundred years old. We first started looking, are there other places we can go, we investigated areas at Cave and Point, we looked on Communipaw Ave, we looked at Berry Lane Park, all trying to determine, is there someplace we could go, the problem with Garfield Avenue Substation is it's small, it's not even an acre, it's only point six acres, and you've seen the area cheek to jowl with other uses, when you have a station that was built in nineteen oh seven, sure, there's gonna be development around it, we're constrained in space, that's why we looked elsewhere, the difficulty we had is there were environmental constraints, planning and zoning constraints, engineering constraints, and more importantly for us, a lack of oiling sellers, therefore, we decided we'll try to upgrade Garfield Avenue Substation. The substation serves fourteen thousand six hundred customers, all in Jersey City, and as Caleb and Frank already explained, we connect to other stations, our new Fairmount Substation at one one four Amity Street, south to Greenville Substation, and even farther south to stations in Bayonne, so we then said, what are we gonna do at Garfield Avenue Substation? So what we first did is we met with Mayor Phillip on March seventh, two thousand twenty-two to discuss the station, the mayor told us he wanted the station to have walls around it, he didn't want anyone knowing what was actually being done there, he didn't want any equipment to show, therefore, he said incorporate walls, two months later, I reached out to Liz Oper, Tanya Marion, and started discussing, what can we do with this station? We think we're gonna have to take this building down, and we have to redevelop the whole thing, and we decided that it might be best to have a nod towards the past, and we do a neoclassical building, that's what was in this area before, and we thought that would be the best path forward. So what I'm here to do now is ask the zoning board to consider other factors instead of just historic preservation, please look at additional competing factors such as economic development and public utility needs, all of these have to be balanced, and the zoning board is best able to take competing interests and balance them accordingly. As you know, this station isn't in a historic district, it's not next to any other historic structures or districts, it's not designated as a local landmark, is it historic? Yes, we know, we built it, we maintained it, we are the original owners, and the building was built for a very specific purpose, on the old Sanborn maps, it actually shows up as a transforming building, essentially what happens is electricity is converted into a form that can be sent out to our customers, you've seen the station, and you've seen how it's cheek to jowl, cheek to jowl with other uses that have cropped up over the years, to the back, we're along Randolph Avenue, residential, we have some garages that we're adjacent to on Harmon Street, on another side of Harmon Street is a brand-new residential structure, about five stories, across the street from the substation are some commercial facilities, namely tire shops and a house, so we're in a hodgepodge of uses, ah, and I should mention, to our south is the Torrico Ice Cream Store, which used to be Shorty's Emporium, so there's a lot of additional uses that have grown up around us, I'd like to mention that the area is slowly developing, there's actually a new house going up on Randolph Avenue, there's the Torrico Ice Cream Store that opened up, and the new residences that are on the northern corner of Harmon and Garfield, however, I'd like to suggest that the city has allowed all this to happen without necessarily considering that there is a historic structure, even the Historic Preservation Commission staff letter admitted that modern development has encroached on the station, I ask, why did the city allow this, if the station has such great historic and aesthetic significance and appeal, why allow all these other uses right next to us, in fact, we've got some garages to our rear that are literally one foot from our substation wall, the paramount purpose of the substation is its use as an electric distribution facility, there's a compelling public need for safe and reliable energy, like all our stations, the stations serve a very utilitarian and important function, so therefore, I ask you to consider the public utility needs that P S E and G has to accommodate, we are required by the Board of Public Utilities to provide safe, reliable energy to all of our customers, as Caleb, our engineer, explained, the building no longer conforms to modern building requirements, not a surprise, it is from nineteen oh seven, it can't continue to function in an efficient, reliable, and sustainable manner in its present form, we actually provided a facility assessment to the Historic Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, the building assessment was done in two thousand and nineteen and was made part of the record for the Historic Preservation Commission, and it lays out much of what Caleb already explained to you, the building's not in compliance with New Jersey Uniform Construction Code requirements, it's not in optimal condition, and it does not accommodate requirements for modern equipment, the equipment we use today is very different than that used in nineteen oh seven, even if we could update the building, and Caleb explained some of the problems, the modern equipment and its required safety clearance standards just does not easily fit into this building, therefore, we consider this building functionally obsolete, now, that does not mean the building is about to fall down, not at all, it does not mean it's unsafe, it just prevents a significant barrier... It just prevents a significant barrier to what we need to do to continue providing electricity for our 14,000-plus customers. So we are committed to making the upgraded station look as appropriate as possible. If wanted, we can incorporate any of the architectural elements that are currently on the station into the new building. For example, if the board wishes to have Palladian windows or some of the architectural features, we can do that. We can take the station sign and put it in a more prominent location. We can even put a historic plaque on the building. PSENG has done this in other cases. And we can make this building something that will encourage redevelopment of the area, and, most importantly, allow us to serve our customers. So if you have any questions, please, we're all here to answer them.
Is that your last expert witness?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Before the commissioners, I don't see anyone from the public to speak, so commissioners, do we have any questions?
Sorry, good evening. I have one question. Is the crane going to be permanent?
Yes.
Yeah, I have another question. When we're talking about, when we're talking about the historical aspect of it, are we talking about the big building itself from public PSENG? Or are we talking specifically about Torrico and the other house?
No, we're talking about the building that is bounded by Harmon and Garfield. It looks somewhat similar to a warehouse.
No, I know, I see it. I've seen it.
The other structures you see, they're transformers and then a cleared yard. And as Caleb explained, one thing our station mechanics hate, right now, you have to pull into the station. You cannot turn around, and you have to back up. We were hoping to alleviate that problem. Right now, all we can do is pull in, and we can't get around the station, other than walking around Garfield and Harmon.
All right, thank you.
Like I said, the crane will be permanent, would have been permanent in the old building. If we had lifted the roof and put in the steel structure, then that crane would have stayed there.
You mentioned the mayor said he wanted a full enclosure. Is that what you guys intend to do, a full enclosure with a new building?
Yes.
Will the new building cover the transformers that are out in the open right now, too? Or, because there's transformers that you could see there as well. Is that a building that's going to cover everything?
Those buildings contain the GIS.
What's in there now?
That's in the building.
Okay.
They're not in there now, I mean, at all. But the new equipment go there. Outside of the building, there's going to be three transformers, right? I think right now there's two. But because of the increased load, we're putting three in there, where two are working, and the third one is kind of like standby, all right? So if you have a problem with one, the other one would come up and maintain power.
So is this going to supply more power to people or maintain what's there now, just obviously upgraded?
It maintains what's there. It predicts going into the future, all right? And we're upgrading, let's call it the circuits around the facility, both on the poles and in the ground, so that they can go with 13 KV power, which allows you to have more power in the same circuits, all right? So when you grow, all right, or you need, I don't know, let's say you get a commercial building that comes in there and needs 2 megawatts of power, as an example. Well, with these circuits, you'll be able to get that power supply to it. And don't quote me on 2 megawatts, but maybe 1 megawatt or something. But you have the ability to supply higher amounts of power as it's needed.
So there's no, in the plans that you put together and the way you're foreseeing this, there's no way to retain any wall of that building or the building itself without compromising the project itself?
Yes, that's correct. Just with the amount of changes that would be, needed to be had, our opinion is that any wall that'd be remaining would probably be significantly damaged during the demolition activities to where the essential function of it just would not be able to be maintained.
I think maybe a little bit, I can't, can't, you're wrong, but basically, that new building is like, there's stand-up panels that would come in from, you know, from certain height, and you put them in. So they come prefabricated with bricks on the outside and all, as you'll see in our design, as later on, we have another design. So, but, you know, if we wanted, I guess, just thinking out of the box, if we wanted to go and get some of the bricks from the existing building, all right, and put some of them into part of the wall in place of the other bricks, we can think about doing that. I mean, but we're certainly not going to be able to get enough bricks to do very much other than a certain section, let's say. And maybe that's where we could put that plaque you're talking about, you know, with the old bricks with a plaque in there or something like that.
So when you're saying, you did use the words appropriate as possible, the building would, the building as appropriate as possible. Are you using the same footprint, the same size footprint that's there already? Or is the building going to be much larger than what the building is right now?
The building would have a smaller footprint, but it would be taller. So it would not have the same square footage in terms of like one floor, but I think in terms of total square footage, it's getting larger because there essentially would be three floors. There's a basement where all the underground circuits are coming in. There's the first floor, which is going to have the GIS equipment. And then on top of that is a third floor, which houses all of the necessary relays and controls to make sure that the equipment's being protected properly and it, you know, trips circuits if there is a fault somewhere else within the system.
Okay, and you also said that it serviced 14,600 Jersey City residents, which is not really a lot of residents, considering the number of people we have in Jersey City. What other areas, what towns are you servicing? Bayonne, any other place?
Our service, our service territory, which was dictated by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities and our franchise rights, extends from Bergen County down to Gloucester County. We serve all the major cities.
Yes, but I'm just talking about this Garfield station.
Ah, this station will serve Garfield Avenue, but has connections to Fairmount Substation.
Right. You said that.
Greenville Substation and Bergen Point Substation, which is in Bayonne.
So did you look in Bayonne when you were looking for property to put this on?
Actually, Bayonne allowed us to take down the current building, which is 1926 vintage, and completely upgrade that building. We did buy property next to Bergen Point Substation, so we were able to expand. So we have almost an acre in Bayonne, which by our standards is a lot.
I just want, I have another question. You spoke about structural damage to the building when you're excavating. How is, when you excavate, is that going to have any structural damage to the Torrico and the other property next to it? While you're excavating, you were talking about structural damage, so.
There was more so to indicate that it's our opinion that when we were doing this work, that there would not be the ability to maintain the building, because we'd be talking about specific demolition in certain areas. And just with the nature of this type of building construction, if I were to try to remove just a portion of a wall, that more than likely, there's going to be significant cracking within the rest of that wall. So within the construction activities, though, we would be protecting the neighboring properties. So any type of demolition would be making sure that we are not damaging, you know, the neighbors and keeping their homes intact.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, do the commissioners have any other questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, so that substation, if something should happen to one of the other ones that it's connected to, does that provide backup power to keep things going through the other ones while something's fixed?
That's the intent of the interconnections.
So in essence, even though it serves 14,000 people, it could serve, potentially have impact on many more because of the fact, okay? That's what.
There are no other questions? Can we hear from staff?
I have one more question, and I just thought about this. No, that was saving that for last. Because Garfield is prone for flooding. Is there any flood mitigation plans or?
It turns out this station is not in a flood zone.
Okay.
We know it is a high water table. That was one concern we had with if we have to use this building and run all the electric conduits underneath the building. Not only were we concerned about possible cracking and damage to the building's substructure, we were also worried about what we were going to find underneath. Because you know that this is an odd part of Jersey City where you've got the hill up there.
Yep, that's why, yes, okay.
And kind of tying into that, like she said, we're not in a flood zone, but our proposed plan for the building would be to keep the basement completely above the water table.
Okay.
And so with that, I think we are, you know, putting the equipment, you know, in a higher elevation, so we're, in a way, providing some amount of flood mitigation, even though that's not an actual requirement that we need to follow.
Okay, so the hole, if you were to keep the building, it's not going to be 15 feet deep? As, excuse me, the new, the new building is not going to be 15 feet deep if you had to repurpose the old building, correct?
Can you?
No, because you said, you said the hole would be 30 by 30 by 15 if you had to use the old building.
That would be just for a temporary hole we would be digging for installation purposes.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. I misunderstood.
No, sorry, sorry, yeah. And so with the building, I think the water table's currently like.
Show them that one with the yellow lines on it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we're saying is like, when we were installing these duck banks in yellow, that to like, they'd be essentially digging a hole that's like 15 feet by 15 feet by 30 feet deep in this area, just to be able to do this. But the building we'd be proposing, I believe the water table's around eight feet below grade.
Okay.
So the basement would be at most eight feet below grade, and we're essentially having like a partially raised basement of sorts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, if we can hear from staff.
Of course. So I will speak to the Historic Preservation Commission's review of this application. The property was built circa 1907. It appears first on a Sanborn map from 1910. And the property, as they have stated, has remained in the hands of PSENG subsidiaries or groups that were later subsumed into PSENG since its creation. And the property is listed in the Historic Preservation Master Plan element. It was identified in the original 1985 Phase 1 survey. It was also identified in the Phase 2 survey. That was in 1986. And I'll just quote a little bit from that survey. It says, "Few such structures have survived in the city from the early decades of this century," talking about the 19th century, "and even fewer have survived in such good workable conditions." And they actually recommend that this property is eligible for inclusion on the National Register under Criteria A and C, which that is association with like broad pattern of events as well as the architectural style. And because of those things, it was also included in the 2024 Historic Preservation Master Plan element, although it has not yet been deemed, listed on the National Register or State Register. It's a Renaissance revival-style industrial building. It's got a low-pitched roof, a lot of those Palladian windows, as was mentioned. Some of the windows on it have been infilled with brick. But in general, the property is in incredible condition for a building that's over 100 years old. So the commission, as well as myself, felt that the property retained a majority of its architectural details, its integrity of design, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. The setting has had a slight diminishment by those modern intrusions, but it still really does have even integrity of setting due to the fact that it is a substation for the surrounding neighborhood. So it does fit into the setting still of the surrounding area. So this was heard on the July 14 HPC meeting, and the commission voted to recommend denial of the permit. If anyone has any questions as to the historical, architectural, or cultural significance or any of the HPC things, I'm more than happy to answer those questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Any further questions?
Great.
Okay, Vinnie? Yes, we need you again to.
Yeah, I mean, you could do it that way, however you like to do it, right?
Okay, let's do it the same way.
So a little curveball that they're throwing at us here is that unlike the other application, I mean, this is a specific-use building.
Mm-hmm.
And now the use is obsolete, basically, is what they're saying. And so when we looked at the, the use, the configuration now is obsolete.
Correct, but the use as.
Oh, the uses, I don't mean the use, you know, you're always going to use it as electric. Yeah, we're not going to put a.
Yeah, but the use as is, is obsolete.
Yes, the use as is, is.
The function of the building.
Yeah, time has changed how to use it, if you know what it comes down to.
Yeah, and so, so in these other applications, we didn't really look at the functionality of the building. It's almost, I was thinking, when you were making this presentation, you know, some way you can make an equation that says the function is now, makes the building structurally unsound, but it's not structurally unsound, but functionally, it's unsound.
Correct.
It's unsustainable like this, so.
It cannot be upgraded.
It can't be upgraded. So, you know, and that throws a little curveball into what we're doing as opposed to the last application. So if we want to use it the same way, I mean, if.
Yes, we do.
I just want to make one comment. When I did say to you that you used the language appropriate as possible, that means that the new structure you're putting in is going to look like this building, replicated like this? I mean, the interior might be different, but what about the exterior that it fits within the neighborhood? Can we see that? Okay.
Yeah, we do have a separate application that's pending. This is part of that application. We have, we've already, we filed a site plan application in 2024.
This is going to be before the planning board?
Uh, no. This is in R1 zone, so we'll be back before you.
Oh, great.
I'll recognize you next time, is that the idea, wouldn't be that far back in my memory.
And again, bear in mind, this design was discussed with planning staff, starting in 2019. Or 2022.
Do the building, and then you can show them the renderings of everything around with the walls and all. You have that?
That's a good point.
Yeah, it is, because it's, it's, I was just thinking, you know, you can go to the construction official.
So yeah, these were some viewpoints that were developed, just an overall first, an aerial view, just showing the area and where these specific viewpoints are. But, you know, there's some specific views to kind of show what the station looks like in its existing conditions and what the proposed conditions would be.
Sure.
And as you can, part of the thing, you can see the, where we're putting the wall in along the sidewalk there, too. It's a, it's a wire, it's mesh fence now. It'll be a 10-foot wall there.
Can I, can I just bring, ask a question? So if you look at the current building up top and that building there, is there a way on the facade, just to do a brick pattern on the facade that makes it look like the?
Can I, can I interrupt? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I don't want this on the record. I like, I don't want this as part of the record. We're not taking the, like, the future building into consideration. If your hardship is obsolete, obsolescence, then let's focus on the hardship and keep it clean. Understood, I just want to keep the record clean.
So, so we're ready to go, so, so. So what we're saying now, again, is if we affirm the appeal, it means we're overturning the decision and we're allowing the demolition of this building. If we deny the appeal, means you're affirming the decision of the zoning officer and you're denying the demolition permit. So which way do you want, well, which way do you want the resolution?
I want the resolution to be to, that we approve the appeal.
So if you make a motion.
To approve the appeal, then you vote yes, that means you're approving it.
You're affirming the appeal, which means we're overturning the zoning officer, and you're allowing the demolition of this building.
Okay.
So first, let's make a motion.
Okay, can I get a motion?
To?
To affirm the appeal?
Right.
Okay, Madam Chair, I like, I like to make the motion to approve case Z2025-0061, as presented to the board this evening.
And that means you move you're affirming this appeal.
You're affirming, okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Beasley?
Commissioner Shadid?
Okay.
Commissioner D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Yeah, he was here for this.
Sorry, Mr. Burns.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes, with a 15% discount.
We won't put that on the record either.
Commissioner Zablukie?
I wish that we could.
I wish they could preserve our electric rates from the date that this building was built, but I guess that's not going to work, but I vote yes.
Vice Chair Rule?
Yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we get to keep the lights on, huh?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the, the appeal application, Z2025-0061, is approved, with six in favor, one abstention, zero no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Six nothing, Mets.
Do we have any resolutions to memorialize?
I don't think so, no.
Any resolutions to memorialize? Okay, so can I have a motion, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.